Oh, my goodness.
It's only sad.
Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all council members are present. Councilmember Rozansky is just not seated at the moment.
Okay. Clarification of items on the consent counter. Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, the staff going to be discussing 13, the, uh, Homer, which is the survey?
Yes, that's going to be pulled off consent and the presentation will be made.
Okay, Councilman Curry?
No items.
Councilman Webb?
I have none.
Councilman Hen?
None.
Councilwoman Diggle?
Uh, yes, I just want to note on number five, the concession contract for CDM, I appreciate the disclosure as far as the firms that applied and that transparency is very important to our revenue policy and, and so thanks for the disclosure and certainly the recommendation seems very sound.
Okay, and I have none.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, though, I do want to let the council know as far as number 10 is concerned, the retiree medical program, I intend to pull that off of the agenda and continue that item so we can bring it to the finance committee and vent it there.
Okay.
We're not, we're going to continue number nine? Oh, we're going to pull it?
You're going to pull nine?
Pull to discuss, though, or?
We have new information, so. Kind of rewrite.
Oh. Are we, are we pulling it to discuss it or continue it or what?
No, I.
We're going to pull it off the agenda for tonight and.
Okay.
We'll bring it, we'll remove it from the agenda. Probably bad choice of words.
Okay. Uh, next item on our agenda is renewal of the official police tow truck service agreements.
This was Glenn going to provide that one? Okay.
Glenn Avro, revenue manager. The since at least the 1970s, the cities had police, official police tow contracts with private companies to provide police tow services. Since at least the mid 80s, the city has chosen two official police tow service providers. Through the 80s, these agreements were renewed annually. Council saw fit in the late 90s to lengthen the term of these agreements and the current agreement that we're working with expires in April of this year, 2008. The current agreements that we're working with provide for the city's authority to extend the current agreements for another five-year term. It's the first time that this particular provision has been added to the official police tow service agreements. Staff was interested in communicating its desire to council that we were proposing to extend the existing agreements pursuant to the terms of the existing agreements for another five-year period. So we wanted to just flesh this out before council before we made the decision to do so. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about the tow contracts. We have representatives from the two police tow contractors present and Lieutenant Schellman from the Newport Beach Police Department that can address any questions you have about the level of service that the police department's enjoyed from these two tow contract providers.
Mr. Mayor, normally I think this would be something the staff would go ahead and do and feel like it had the authority to do, but knowing that there was another firm out there and I'm not sure if it's located in Costa Mesa, I think that was my understanding that might have interest in the tow contract. I wanted to get it before city council and make sure that you were okay with us moving forward with it, or if you weren't, that we would go in a different direction.
Okay. Is there any questions to Glenn? Mike?
Yeah, just give us some sense of the history of satisfaction with these two firms in terms of have there been an abnormal number of complaints? What's the nature of those complaints? What's your view?
You know, directly, I think most of the complaints regarding the police tow services are directed to the traffic division of the police department. We get involved in rate issues because it's our office that sets those rates each year. There's, nobody likes being impounded.
Right.
By the police department unless they've requested that service by the police department. So we do get some complaints about that. In terms of the customer concerns, it's typically about rates and typically the kind of concerns that we get about rates are that I could call a tow service and they could charge something substantially less than what the police tow rates are that are imposed by the city or authorized by the city and imposed by the tow service providers. The distinction between the kinds of tow services that you can get in the, for private tow service versus those requirements that we have for official police tow services are significant. 15 years ago, the city regulated the non-official police tow providers. We obligated them to have insurance, driver's permits, et cetera. The standards are very different between those two kinds of operations and I think that the rates that are authorized by the city are consistent with what we see charged in neighboring communities and are distinct from the private tow service providers because the, the equipment requirements, the location to city hall, the level, the standards that we impose on the official police tow providers are so much greater.
Okay, and we haven't had a problem with charges being not in accordance with the city approved tariffs?
Not, we, I've not had any of those complaints. Indeed, each complaint we get about, you know, tow fees, we've been able to substantiate the rates were, they were charged what the rates are set by the county, the city.
All right. One other quick thing, Robin and Homer, I think we keep seeing contracts with $1 million insurance limits in them and I thought we'd had conversation before about raising these insurance limits. We, we need to fix that. I, this contract ought to have higher insurance limits than $1 million. Now, I carry insurance in excess of a million dollars, so, you know, and I've got to believe that these firms already have insurance limits that are excessive of a million dollars. So, you know, I don't know precisely what the right number ought to be for this contract, but we just, we've got to get at this to start making sure that our contracts reflect higher insurance limits.
We actually, by municipal code section 515-130, authorize the rates to be set by the risk manager, so it's within our administrative abilities to, you know, have the risk manager adjust that. I think that'd be appropriate to look at.
What we can do is when we give notice of renewal of the contract, we can include with the notice increased insurance requirements.
And if I might just elaborate on that, the existing agreements provide that the contractors are obligated to comply with municipal code. Municipal code authorizes us through the risk manager to define what those insurance requirements should be, so I think we may be able to exercise that in advance of the expiration of the agreements in five years.
Just by way of impression, I would think a minimum $2 million and if $5 million is available and reasonable, I wouldn't mind that, particularly for this kind of operation, so.
Any other questions? I've got a couple. You didn't include the rate schedule in, in what we have, so I don't know exactly what we're, what we're charging on this, but did I understand you to say that we get to set the rates annually at whatever we want, that the operator has no say in that?
That's correct. We set the rates and the rates are adjusted annually by the change in the CPI and I've got a rate schedule if the mayor would like a copy of that. The rates aren't really an issue with regards to the agreement. The city council sets the rates pursuant to municipal code.
Well, how do they know what they're going to make if they don't know what the rates are?
Each year, we advise them and may what the adjusted rates are to be.
And then they make a decision whether they want to continue on with the contract or not if they find those rates not acceptable?
That's probably their prerogative.
Is, is that what it is under the contract? I mean, that's kind of a weird way to have a contract.
Well, the contract starts with the rates that were set in the original contract that was approved and then it provides for the rate schedule to be automatically adjusted on the anniversary date by the CPI and then authorizes the city to require and revise the fee schedule by mutual agreement at any time upon finding that the rate adjustment is, rate adjustment is justified. And then there's a limitation on the operator, what they would charge the city on the percentage of the charge of those rates. So we set the rates for how they deal with the public and the charging, but when it's a city charge, then there's a, can't be more than 25% of this, of the charge that's set. So that's something else I think that we would need to work with and negotiate with them on setting a new set of rates for the renewal of this agreement. The, the way this agreement is set up is it, 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 the city has the option to renew it, you know, at the, within 60 days of the, of the, of its expiration on April 8th.
Okay, so on the rates that we have now, what is the city's, I guess, profit, is I don't know if that's the right word, but?
We impose a 10% tow contract service fee on the rates they're charged by the tow operators and just the rates for the services that they're providing. I want to clarify that the rates that the customer may pay may include a police release fee and may also include parking citation charges that the city would have collected had the tow operator or had the, had the customer come to city hall to get the, to pay the parking fines before they went to the police department to get the release, which precedes their appearance at the tow facility itself. So today, we have the tow companies picking up those parking fines for our, for us rather than the police department, clarifying, confirming that they paid it before they issued a release.
Glenn, can you run through what, quickly, what the major fee structure looks like?
Certainly. For a, for a regular tow, it's $142. A flatbed is, comes in at $153. Vehicles stored outside the facility are $36 a day, vehicles inside $44 a day. An after hour release fee of $48 is imposed. A onsite release, which is the, the customer comes if it's being impounded and intercepts the impound, onsite release is $71. There are a number of miscellaneous charges like dollies and driveshaft and linkage reconnections, $142 an hour labor charge if that's applicable here. But the primary charges are for the, what we see most often are the regular tow services about $142 and the storage. Police release fee, I think, is currently $30? 27? 37, thanks.
So, so who monitors this to make sure that the towing companies aren't gouging people with all this stuff? I could see throwing in all kinds of potential charges if no one's really looking at how they're being charged.
Annually, the tow companies provide us a statement and of the police charges, or the police tow charges imposed, the franchise fees, more frequently than that, quarterly with the case, on the case of one and monthly on the case of one of the other tow providers, they give us a statement of what they've collected on police charges, police tow charges, police release fees and parking citations. So we get a regular review of what they've charged. I think probably the best mayor, best review we get is from the customers because no one likes having their car impounded and that is the source, probably the most complaints that we get are why are the rates, what the rates are. We have the opportunity frequently to reconcile the customer's bill to the tow rates that city council's authorized.
And one final question, what are, what are the standards that they have to adhere to that a regular tow truck operator doesn't have to adhere to that we have to charge such higher fees?
We don't have any insurance obligations, driver permit obligations, equipment obligations, proximity to city hall obligations for police, for non-contracted tow services. So if you satisfy the vehicle code requirements relative to the equipment requirements, you can call yourself a tow operator tomorrow. One of the, I think, greatest costs, and the two tow operators are here and they may be able to speak more eloquently to this, but I think one of the most significant costs that we have is that we obligate by contract their storage facilities to be within a proximity of city hall and, or the police department, I believe it is currently. So the value of land, you know, if you're a tow provider and you're providing private impound services for one of the private lots around here, you know, you can station your storage facility, I think it's 10 miles away from city, from the city limits and, and you can probably find land at a much cheaper rate than what you're going to pay for it being where we obligate the tow operators to be located. We don't, we obligate the tow operators to provide certain amount of equipment on hand so that there's not a delay when providing services to the police department. That brings along certain costs just to have that equipment available for calls for police services.
How close to city hall do they have to be? What's the radius?
Senate, is it 10 miles from?
10 miles from the town, if the man can do it. S of, uh, city line. Thank you.
We seem to be monitoring, you know, the $37 you get for police and the revenues that come to the city, but what, is there a system in place beyond complaints by tourists that, or others that would really show what the total bill is? I mean, what is a system in place that you can verify what their total bill is?
We audit their, we audit their statements, a desk audit every year when we get their annual financial statement. We do a site visit audit every three years with our auditors, so we're interested in making sure that they've calculated accurately the 10% franchise fee for us and that's directly related to what they've charged the customer for tow services. So it's not merely relying on customer complaints to reconcile what the customer was charged to what the rates were authorized.
But Glenn, are you saying that all of the fees that could be charged to customer in a tow, that the city collects 10% of them? Are, are there some outside of what the city?
Yeah, there, there are the tow, the police tow services, those fees that are authorized by council, those are the charges that the tow companies calculate the franchise, the police tow contract service fee on, the 10%. The, the charges that the tow companies are collecting on our behalf and specifically those are the police release fee, the $37 and any unpaid parking tickets, aren't subject to the 10% franchise fee calculation.
Councilman Curry?
Glenn, do towies or impoundees rather have the option of paying by credit card when they find themselves impounded or is this a cash and carry business?
By, by vehicle code, they're required to accept credit cards.
Thank you.
When, you know, I guess I, I'm still not real comfortable with all this. I guess I'll have to look at that rate schedule. When, when the rates were set, did it, were they initially set because that's just kind of what everyone else was charging? Because you said that we're right within the range what other cities are charging or was it, did someone actually go through and calculate what the cost was to provide the service with some profit to the operator and some profit to the city?
We, we did a rate survey when we did the last, when we initiated this agreement and we compared the rate survey, we, we took the rate survey and negotiated directly with the two police tow service providers that were making bids at that time to confirm that they were comfortable with, they could live with the rates that we were proposing. We didn't study their actual costs, factor in a percentage of profit for them, that, that was not engaged.
So how were these two companies selected originally? Were they selected just on qualifications and the rates set subsequent to that or did they, were initially chosen on rates or were they the only two that submitted proposals or how did that all work?
The last bidding process, they were the only ones that submitted proposals. Historically, the greatest challenge, Mayor, for these police tow service providers have been providing, you know, facilities with proximity to the city and having the necessary equipment to service, adequately service our police. You know, we, there are a number of tow companies in the area that would love to have this contract. They see it to be very lucrative potentially, but coming up with the, with the facilities and the equipment to adequately service our police department's been a challenge for them. Historically, these two have always been, have always provided bids. We've had other bidders in the past and the police department investigated for this police tow contract and in prior police tow contracts, they go out and do an investigation on the facilities, the operators, the, they do an inspection of the equipment. There historically hasn't been a focus on the rates they're charged. We haven't really seen that as been, being the competitive factor here. Once we've confirmed through the police department's investigation that the operators have the required amount of equipment and facilities, we at that point will negotiate a rate, present it in a package to council.
How was the bid noticed to bid circulated?
We published that in the city's official paper, Daily Pilot, when we do that.
Okay, and then when you get the document back, is it sealed or is it a negotiated kind of a situation at that point?
It's not a sealed bid. We had two bidders in the last, we knew, by ordinance, we have two official police tow contracts. We had two bidders, so it wasn't a sealed bid.
How many people approximately got towed away this last year? I noticed that you, our fee was 800, 86,000. That means $860,000 was charged to the public roughly.
Mm-hmm.
And?
We've got records that one of the two police tow providers offered and just to explain how they get this work, the police department alternates weekly, thank you, the rotation, so one company's on one week, another company. So this is probably representative of both companies, half the numbers that the two companies enjoy in terms of police impounds. 2007 calendar year, they had 897 impounds at GNW, so we say probably roughly, you know, 900 for both, so 1,800 toes. And just historically, they've offered, they count back to 2002. That number's down significantly. 2002, they had at GNW 1,154 toes during that calendar year, so a daily average today of, or last year of 2.4 or 5 vehicles impounded compared to 3.16 in 2002. Business isn't getting better for them. It's, it's, it's slowing down a bit.
So, so did you say 1,800 toes?
I said 897 for GNW. If that's, if we could say that's, round that to 900 and we say that's half of the business, that makes it 1,800 toes a year.
That's an average of $477 a tow. That's a heck of a lot higher than the rates that you just told us.
I can assure you, we, we don't have, I've not been responding to complaints about $400 tow bills.
Wouldn't that potentially also include the impound fees because if a car stays longer?
It does, it does and it can get larger than that, but if we, perhaps the two tow companies can offer us some explanation of what is the average?
We also did, some people did their cars there for a week.
Right. They have to pay unpaid parking tickets before they can have their vehicles released, for example, and we find parking tickets that often exceed the impound charges that are imposed, so. So that does delay and increase the storage fees.
Some people might go to jail for a couple of weeks' time, I would imagine, without cars sitting in there.
I wouldn't imagine that'd be the average, personally. I mean, around $460, $480 a person, sounds awfully high to me for.
There's also people that have their car impounded for like 30 days, like driving on a, you know, so there's quite a few reasons for it to be impounded, and I think more than just.
Homer, why, Homer, why wouldn't you want to, if there's another towing company that would want to, would want to bid on this, why wouldn't we not want to put it out to bid and let another company bid on it? Do they not have storage facilities or something, or is there something about them that you wouldn't want to hear their proposal?
I think there is something about the proposer who is interested in, in getting this bid. I'm not sure that it would be the subject of an open council meeting discussion.
And that's, there's no one else out there?
It's the only, it's the only person I'm aware of, Mayor, that has even indicated any interest in the contract.
Lieutenant, what are the constraints on the contract that we draw so few bidders? I mean, you talked about the location of the storage facility and so on. Is there, do you see any way that we might relax those standards to get a greater pool of?
I think Glenn would be better to answer that question, but there, most of them are regulated by the vehicle code and additional requirements by the city.
Some of the restrictions we are is that the tow companies have multiple tow trucks, so there's at times at night where we might be towing two or three cars at the same time across the city, and we expect the tow company to have enough equipment in place to service us for that time without calling anybody else in. There's also requirements that if we have vehicles on the beach, that they have the larger equipment with the winches to get the, those vehicles off the beach, as well as the ability to serve large tractor trailers that might break down or need to be towed in the city. So that causes some of the equipment to have larger equipment demands than other companies. And as far as the, the average, I would expect the average tow fee to be higher because on drunk drivers or people driving on suspended driver's license typically, to discourage their continued driving, we will impound cars for an additional 30 days so that person cannot have their vehicle for that period of time. That would greatly increase that person's particular tow fees, as well as, once we authorize the, the release of the vehicle, there are times when people don't go down to pick up their car right away, either for convenience, but also because some people are in custody. If they are in custody over the weekend, they're going to incur charges through Monday or Tuesday before they might be able to get out of jail and get their car released. So that would increase the, the tow fee from what the, the flat tow rate would be.
Any other, Councilman Zansky? Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Now, that, that comes back to the council, that contract? Or is it just something that the staff renews under the original?
It doesn't need to, unless the council wants it. Unless the council wants to go out for another RFP, it's, the contract's already set up for renewal on 60 days' notice for the option.
Okay. Anybody want to go out for other proposals?
Well, I, I presume that we'll fix the insurance problem along the way on this one.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody from the public want to comment on the police towing contracts? Next item is, pardon? Oh, didn't see him. Got to be quick.
My name's Wayne Miller, and I'm the owner of G and W Towing. And just to maybe give the council a little information, the volume of the calls being so low on a daily average basis, yet we're still required to have a lot of equipment, a lot of storage space. Basically, because the city of Newport is still a beach city, our volume shrinks dramatically during the non-summer months, and that volume reflects across the board in all, you know, you can just see it if you look at the averages. Glenn was telling you, there are 2.7 or three calls a day. I have 17 trucks, two and a half acres of land to, to park the cars on, which we need in the summertime, and then we don't need for nine months. It's, it's a, it's what's been required for us to be able to provide the service that's necessary in the summertime, and then basically we have to survive during the wintertime. And as the numbers are showing with Glenn, it's been shrinking in the last few years, and it's causing problems, and we're getting, the, the amount of money that we're collecting in fees are, is, is allowing us to survive currently, but it is becoming more difficult. On the issue, issue of insurance, I can only speak for myself, but our companies have, we currently have, all the policies that are written for most of the businesses in my industry write a base level policy for a million, and then I have umbrella insurance beyond that that also ensures the city, and currently it's a 9 million on top of the 1 million. So we're well-covered, I think. That's, you know, about all I can say about it is, it's difficult. It's not like it was, you know, I've personally have been providing the service since the early 80s, and there were better times. It's become quite difficult over the last few years. So when we've done our best to find new avenues of business, we provide the towing service for a lot of the car dealerships in town to move cars that break down, endure, you know, warranty conditions and so forth. Thank you very much for keeping Fletcher Jones in town. We appreciate that. They're very good customer buyers, and, yeah, they're, they're a very good dealership. In Mercedes, yes, they do break down, or fail to proceed, is what I've been told. So as far as what you're questioning also about the fees, the majority of our customers come and go within 24 hours, and they are charged the standard tow rate and the base fee. We have mounds of paper that we can give that will show that the majority of the time they're coming in and out for a base tow and a storage. With the average moves up is because there are the ones that get to stay for 30 days, and that's the people driving without a driver's license, and those people, you know, the 30-day thing is in question with the, with the state, but you think about it, the person driving down the road without a driver's license doesn't have insurance. And you really don't, in my opinion, we don't want to release those people, write them a ticket, and release them, because if we've written them a ticket, and they're now driving down the road and they run into you or me, and the city knew about it, then we've got problems there. So it makes sense to, you know, to take them off the road for 30 days and make them get a driver's license, get insurance, and so forth to reclaim their cars. So, and that's what the legislature allowed, thank goodness, through the legislation that is there. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I hope I've made you feel better about your concerns.
Just a suggestion, you could, I'm sure, easily calculate and send us what the median ticket value is, and that might help understand.
It's about 225 or so would be what the average comes in, goes out for. The 30-day ones are going to be about $1,400 by the time they drive out, between 1,200 and $1,400, and that's what runs the average up. There are, it's really scary when you realize the number of people driving on the road without a driver's license. It's a high percentage, a lot higher than I would have ever guessed. When they first enacted that 30-day law, I thought it was, I mean, there can't be that many people out there. It's a lot more than you think. And I'll give you just a weird example. We did a four-hour, we didn't, City Costa Mesa did a four-hour driver's license and insurance checkpoint on Fairview Road on a Saturday morning, and in four hours, we towed 123 cars. That's a lot of people going to the fairgrounds with no driver's license. So, you know, especially when you consider they only stopped every fourth car. So.
Mr. Tim Dagel?
Uh, yes, the council hasn't seen the audit, but I had a question for you since you submit the paperwork and all this numerical information. Does it distinguish, you know, for example, this is the number of one day, you know, this is the number of 10 days? So we can also get a flavor for, you know, are they mostly one day? Or how do you submit that information in what form?
I give the, we do it on a monthly basis, and I give the monthly printouts to my accountant at the end of each year, and then he goes through and audits it and prepares a report that I've delivered to Glenn's office.
Okay, so you haven't seen the report, then?
I, I've only seen the audited report. I've also seen the pile of paperwork that leads to it, but yeah.
Okay. Does the audited report contain that breakdown?
The reports that we give to the auditor does, and then I don't think he breaks it down beyond that. But it's, it's broken down on a monthly basis, 12 months in a year, so.
Thank you.
But it, column-wise, we could give you that information if you'd like. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the council on the police tow rates? Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is revenue status and projections.
Councilman Curry asked for this item approximately six weeks ago, so we thought the study session would be a good time to let you know how our revenues are tracking during the current budget year, and Dan Manichevitz is going to provide the, I think, detailed report. Dennis, you going to lead us off?
Yes, thank you, City Manager.
Good new and improved, Dennis Danner, everyone.
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor Selich and council members. As City Manager mentioned, Councilman Curry requested this information in early January, I believe, January 8th, and I think it was probably prompted by the news in the newspapers about the state's fiscal crisis, and I think we've all heard some stories about cities throughout the state. I know that I was speaking to the city of Sacramento a few weeks ago, and, and at least in the Finance Department, the city of Sacramento, they're looking at 20 percent budget cuts. And I think the state's budget, the governor mentioned 10 percent across the board cut. So I think the question was prompted by how's the city of Newport Beach doing, and I think that we have some good information to share with you this afternoon. As Homer mentioned, I've asked our finance officer, Dan, to provide this information to you. He put it together over the last couple of weeks, and it's some good information. We reviewed it today, and so with that, unless there's some questions, I'll let Dan proceed.
As, as Dennis mentioned, you know, there have been a number of things in the papers lately that, that may be on, on folks' mind, and I'm just going to go through them real briefly. The housing market turmoil, the tightening of the credit policies, certainly the city has, has received more calls in the last seven years from rating agencies taking a look at some of our, our debt issues, mainly our outstanding debt is, is in the assessment district arena, but certainly there is, there's much more concern over credit quality these days. With, with the changes in the, the housing market, there, there was a creation of the so-called wealth effect. You had more equity in your home, you felt wealthier, you had that, that propensity to maybe spend a little bit more. Now with the downturn, the concern is the opposite effect of that wealth deterioration. And so the, the rippling effect is, is that going to fall into the sales and the consumer confidence and the threat of recession certainly solidified based on the Fed view, you know, the number of federal funds rate decreases over, since September, I think we're approaching something close to 2 percent in successive federal fund rate decreases. As Dennis mentioned, the state fiscal prices themselves, they, you hear numbers in, in the neighborhood of 10, 10 billion to 14 billion. I think in terms of their, their projected operating deficit for '09, it's 10 billion, but counting the accumulated deficit carrying forward from the previous years, they're looking to make up some, some $14 billion. And of course, you know, that, you know, how does this impact the city? Well, you know, in the housing market, there's a potential for property tax, delinquencies, foreclosures, reassessments, slower consumer spending, lower hotel occupancy, and then of course, any legislative action that the, the state chooses to take on. Further indicator of just, you know, statewide economic, you know, recession, you know, real, real GDP, GDP growth, I think finished up sometime in '07 in the 2.1 percent, declining from 3 percent, and 3.6 percent in 2004. The 2008 projection is 1.9 percent. Those, those of course are nationwide, and it doesn't always affect our, our local economy hand in hand, but there, there are patterns that start to emerge. This chart is, Dennis wanted me to stress, this is taking a look at our major growth rate and year to, year-over-year growth rate in, in our top three revenues. There's a lot of noise in this chart, but you can, you can see, one thing I want to point out is, is 2008 and 2009 numbers are, are, are estimated. They're really budgeted, probably more conservative. To reduce the noise out of this chart is pretty, pretty hard to follow, and you start smoothing this for, by, by, you know, using just a simple three-year trailing average, you can start seeing trends develop in the secured property tax. The secured property tax, you know, hitting its, its growth peaks in 2003 and 2004 and starting to decline now. Now, recognize, this isn't year-over-year decreases in property tax. This is just a slowing, slowing of the, of the growth rate. And what you can see is, is, you know, we, you know, everybody knows, real estate markets are cyclical, and we're, we're in it, we're in a downward trend. Again, the estimates in 2008 or '09 are, those are conservative worst, almost worst-case Following the troughs, the, the spending patterns or the more, I guess, consumer spending habits, you can see after two, after 9/11, 2001, we saw a big pullback in, in sales tax and UTOT, and, and, you know, right around that same time, UTOT, there were a couple hotels, the Fairmont and Marriott went through an extensive renovation and pulled a number of rooms off the market. Now, those, those hotels are seeing full, full capacity again, and as I understand from Glenn, a lot of my feedback on, on how some of this, you know, feeding in our local economy is coming from our revenue manager, Glenn Everout, who is in, in, you know, contact with the hoteliers and, and the luxury sales dealers. So, you know, you can see the 2007 dip in hotel. That is really because we haven't been, felt comfortable revising the projections based on that steep growth in UTOT. We'll cover that a little bit later, but again, this is, this is not something to, to, to run with in terms of where this is all heading, but to establish an overall trend, you know, you know, looking at growth, maybe the shape of these curves, what we're heading into. Certainly, I think that what, you know, what I've heard, you know, 2000, first quarter of 2008 was going to be a brutal year for almost all economic segments, property tax dilemma maybe lasting two to three years, and maybe at the end of the fourth year, starting things to starting to increase again. So moving on, property tax, you know, we really have to feel fortunate here in Newport Beach are, are, you know, although we are coming off growth, record-high assessed valuation of growth, and we are seeing some, some decline, but we growth, and we are seeing some decline, but we have some extraordinary increases over time. I'm going to skip to the next chart just to, so you can get a feel for our assessed valuation growth over a period of time. Again, this is, this is growth. This is not actual revenues. And you can see the long-term trend. The red line is the trend line based on linear regression of all those points. You can see it's well above, the average over a 20-year period of time is someplace between 7% and 8%. So that's just extraordinary. Now, of course, those trends don't last forever. These are cyclical markets, and we don't build an operating budget based on those extraordinary times. You can see the green line is more or less where when we build our operating budgets, they're going to be built off of a more conservative estimate because we're concerned with future sustainability of operations. We have low revenue projections at a cost of undershooting the mark in some cases, but we're very happy to come at the end of the year and say, okay, things came better than our worst-case scenarios. But that is how we've used and funded a lot of our reserves, and we'll show you later, our reserve growth over the same period of time has been phenomenal. And we have, we're able to sock away money for contingency reserves, pre-fund a lot of the facility replacements that we're going to be moving forward to. And so heading into some of these storms, we're in, we are in very good shape. In addition, there's a significant gap in property taxes between the market and assessed value. There's still a very significant gap. And this is something that the assessors' office put out. They feel, okay, you know, you know, will my, will a property value decline affect my property taxes? They're saying in most cases, probably not. You're most susceptible for a decline in property taxes if you purchased your home in 2005, 2006, 2007. But based on county-wide averages, there is a significant gap between the market value of homes and the taxable value. That spread is so, you know, and say, well, so what? So if property values drop 20%, they're nowhere near the taxable value of homes. Now, these, these numbers aren't germane for Newport Beach, but, you know, we believe there is a similar, similar pattern. In looking more closely at some of this data, I was surprised to see that there is a significant portion of our assessed valuation that was really driven by sales from 2005 through 2007. Thirty-four percent is bigger than I expected. And that is same and true in number of parcels. So, you know, you have, you know, you know, in homes that obviously were, that were purchased in the 1970s and 80s are probably 500% undervalued or more. But, you know, they're representing 20%, 20% of our assessed value, assessed valuation. 1990s homes, there's another 10,000 homes that are severely undervalued. 2004, 2000, homes purchased through 2004 through 2005, personally, I don't think there's much threat of seeing a decline. What all this is going to mean, to the extent there are any reassessments or a lot of sales activity in this area, which I just don't think, and the same sort of dynamics happen here in Newport Beach that they do in Riverside, where they, where people bought homes through low-grade funding, and now are in a position to not being able to afford that, those loans. So we do have some vulnerability, but we, we, we've been so conservative with our property tax estimates that we still think we're in a very good position. How is that relating to collections in the current year? This chart is busy. What I'm, what I'm really trying to get at, if you, as an accountant, as often do, we look backwards at our data. We, you know, what can we see in the, in the past trends that can help us, give us a good predictor? And if you look at the collection percentage by, by February, and it's where we have actual data, you can see in this collection trend, that represents that in 2005, 2006, our collections through February, we were 56, pretty tightly configured to be 56% collected of our total, of our levy. Now, of course, we know without fail that with the value of our homes relative to the property taxes, that we're going to collect 98% of our levy eventually. What we don't know is how many reassessments that we will, we will see for, you know, potential downgrades. But in the last several years, it's been reassessments upwards for new construction and new homes coming online, a supplemental tax rule. Really, that tends, if you look at the chart, we have a very close pattern of payment throughout January, February, but we start, we see a bigger spread in April where that variation actually comes into play. And what these are, the orange line is 2005 actual, 2006, the blue line is 2006 actual, and the yellow line is 2007 actual. And what I did to produce the 2008 and 2009 is take the actual, where we were collected through, through, through January, and use that, that collection percentage to say, well, if this is any predictor of where we'll end up, we're trending at least to be the green line, which although it looks very close to as budgeted, that's still half a million dollars more we're trending to collect than where we've actually budgeted. And so you can see from 2007 at 48.9 million, the revised budget, we've bumped it up to 52 million, and we're trending collections at 52.5 million. And, and the as budgeted for 2009 includes a, help me out, Dennis, as a 4% increase over the prior years. And we know, looking at, going back to that, that really screwy growth rate chart, that our growth rate is going to come down. It will not likely, in my opinion, over the three-to-four-year kind of vulnerable stage, dip below or go negative. But it may come close over that time to maybe at the worst of it, back down to what we budget anyways. It may come down as our average is, it's between 7 to 8. We see things dropping during that time, maybe down to 4% at worst-case scenario. Still, and that's 4% growth over the previous year. And that's typically what we budget. So from a continued sustainability operation standpoint, we just think we're in fantastic shape compared to many of our neighbors who have taken some of these extraordinary highs or extraordinary times and built their budget around that. Certainly, the state did that during, during, during the 2000s when we had all of the dot-com capital gains, built their budget on those extraordinary incomes, and then had a very difficult time unwinding that out of their operating budget. What we don't have, we, we don't have very good data on delinquencies, foreclosures, or reassessments. It's not that the delinquencies are not available, they're only available to us on a parcel-by-parcel basis. We have 60,000 parcels out there that are, you know, it'd be just very difficult to evaluate anything on a parcel-by-parcel basis. Glenn is working with Webster's, Webster, Webster Gilroy's office to see if there's some better way of getting information both on their delinquencies, foreclosures, and any reassessments.
Are we at Teeter Plan County? Do we have the Teeter Plan in Orange County? No. So to the extent there's, there's delinquencies, we actually bear the brunt of those until they're collected.
We are not a Teeter Plan agency.
That's correct. The county's a Teeter agency, Teeter County, it's available to us. We chose not to become part of that program. We're one of the few cities, I think there's only like three in Orange County, that don't participate in that program. We chose not to.
And that's presumably because we would make more on the, on the late fees and that kind of thing.
That's correct.
Yeah, people actually bailing their properties out. Okay.
And we've traditionally collected, you know, 98% of our levy, and eventually, we get all of it by the time they realize they're going to foreclose, you know, for a couple thousand dollars on a million-dollar property. We're not at risk. It's timing of cash flows, but as we see, our contingency reserve is high to be able to float those timing issues.
Dennis, we have another issue. We probably need to wrap it up in about five to 10 minutes.
Okay. I will move on, move on quickly. Secured property tax collection, we covered. Sales tax, sales tax is a little tougher area, although we have a lot of positive things out there. Luxury auto sales does not seem to be affected by the downturn. There are still, dealerships are reporting record, record sales in luxury area. The Lexus dealership, since it is new, although we get 100% of their purchase value of vehicles upfront, any of their leasing, we only get, if it's a five-year or three-year lease, we only get one-third of that sales tax in the first year. And so it'll take three to five years before we get the full, full realization of those revenue streams. We have Nordstrom and Fashion Island to look forward to in the, in the department stores. But we are, much more difficult to predict collections. There's, the pattern is not as tight on the sales tax. So we, we are, keep our estimate to be very conservative on sales tax. We're only estimating a 2% increase in sales, even though, even though it's trending in excess of our, of our budget.
Well, where do I look here and find how much it's trending this year? What is our performance this year?
So as budgeted, we were, in '08, we were budgeting 22.8, and we're trending on '08 to be 23.6.
And what is that compared to '07? In, in terms of an increase?
The way, the way the sales tax works, as you probably know, is we receive two advances and then a cleanup in the third quarter, and our next cleanup is March. But we're, through February, we're trending 11% of both for the prior fiscal year.
Really?
Yes.
That's phenomenal.
I don't know if you mentioned it, but isn't our sort of percentage from the Lexus also going to be kicking in here?
Oh, yes. What Councilman Mayor Proton Daigle is referring to is that we owed the first 863,000 to Lexus dealership before we started sharing the additional sales tax 50-50, and we passed that mark in, I believe, September of last year.
Trending occupancy taxes also look surprisingly well. We've got positive feedback from the hoteliers. As I mentioned earlier, the hotel expansions for Marriott and Fairmont are also complete, so more rooms are available. We have the Pelican Hills Resort to look forward, 220 rooms. Expected to open November 8th is our last understanding, which become fully operational February 2009. What's extraordinary about the Pelican Hills, they have 100 villas available that will be available at $2,000 a night. So it's a lot of TOT. And so that, based on where that's trending, 2007 is looking like a 17% increase over, over last year's collections. As budgeted, we have, we have it flat. And it's, if the whole, if the trends hold true, you know, it's a very positive outlook for UTOT as well.
And would we attribute that to the hotel renovations primarily, and the fact that the average room rates are substantially higher than they perhaps were in the past? Is that what's driving this number? Or is there a factor for assumed occupancy at the new Pelican Hill Resort?
No, they're really, it's based on current collections. So Pelican Hills is really not in the picture right now. I think it's the hotel expansion and occupancy.
So to the extent that we're running 17% ahead, I mean, the takeaway from this presentation is if we're running 17% ahead in TOT and 11% ahead in sales tax, which is remarkable given the state of the economy, and 4% ahead in property tax, when a lot of communities are having a decline, bottom line is, we're in really good shape here.
Very good shape, okay.
I, I know we have to move along with another item, but that's, that's really what we wanted to, the message we wanted to relay today, that we're in a lot better shape than most cities and even though we budget conservatively. I think we have like one last slide that we should probably share with you, and that's our, our fund balance statement. And so you can see how positive that really is.
There were a couple of questions about legislative updates, and there are, there's some very good information on Prop 1A and some delays in the user, gas tax. There are timing delays. We don't know that the state is planning on enacting any borrowing of Prop 1A yet, but on the Michael Coleman site, the legislative analyst, which is California City Finance, he does a pretty good job of keeping us abreast of what's there. This is total general fund balance right now, and total general fund balance isn't always as a good predictor of how things are. But if you look at the reserve levels that we're pointing out, operating reserve right now, which is $7.9 million, we've got a pers reserve of $5 million, our contingency is fully funded at $8.9 million. If the, if the, if the state does enact any sort of shenanigans, we've got, if it's just a timing issue, we can, we can, we can cover it with our contingency. And our facilities replacement plan, at the end of the year, will be funded up to $20.2 million. So we feel we're in very good position for next year's budget. This is everything in a nutshell, all three, total general fund, fund balance by the L line, and the remaining are the secured property tax sales and UTOT. With that, I'll leave. Any questions to the smart people in the audience?
Any questions, Dan?
Not so much a question, but just to make one other point. It is, while we're blessed with the large increases in our revenue structure over the last several years, the other very striking thing about this is the stability of our revenue structures. Only two years in the last 20 have we seen an actual decline in secured property tax revenues. And this, and it's because the sources of our revenue are much more stable than some other cities. Riverside County, for example, or the City of Riverside, and some of the inland Empire cities, whose property tax revenue growth has been driven very hard by new home development and new construction development that has come to a screeching halt right now. Those are the cities that really have a problem to deal with. And, but we're, we're almost fully developed, and our, our secured property tax increase of rise, rises from turnover of existing housing stock and the revaluation associated with that in Prop 13. with that in Prop 13. So as long as the turnover doesn't go to zero, and there isn't a lot of assessed, assessment challenges that result in reductions in property taxes by property by property, we have a very high probability that our secured property tax will continue to increase. And we've got drivers for new source of sales tax and TOT that'll protect us from a downswing in the economy. So we've got a very balanced economy, a very balanced revenue structure, that's not subject to anywhere near the fluctuations, sudden fluctuations, that a lot of other cities have.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I just have one. Dennis, where do we stand on the actual revenue to date versus what you had rejected when we did last year's budget? You have a feeling for that?
I believe we're, in all of our categories, we're not projecting any declines over what we budgeted. In fact, as Dan mentioned, property taxes from the original budget is going to be up over a million dollars from our revised estimate, probably half a million dollars. The only thing that, and it's not really negative, but we, there are a lot of these police grants, technology grants, probably three to four million dollars that are expiring in the current fiscal year, so we won't have those next year. But it's already factored into our revenue base, our projections for '09, we're projecting the approximate, even, even without the grants, we're projecting a 2.9% increase in, in general fund revenues total.
So generally, we're 2.9% ahead of where you thought we would be, if you averaged all these different categories together then?
In the current year, we're probably four to five, and in the, in the new fiscal year, probably 3%, 2.9%.
Okay.
These increases on this page don't reflect that because the 2007, those are actuals and not what, what we initially projected. 2008 revised is, is 1% over, over the, over the 2007, which is just was, you know, extraordinary numbers.
But again, you got to exclude all the one-time revenues that, you know, tend to skew prior fiscal years.
And it's not like the police grants went away, we've just pulled them out of the general fund now that the Integrated Law and Justice Agency has its own entity, we just, we, we show them outside of the general fund.
And of course, if those police grants go away, the spending associated with them often.
Yeah, those were one-time, at least these particular technology grants were one-time. We didn't hire police officers with those, we did technology improvements.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone in the public want to comment on the revenue status?
God bless the Chaytor Congress.
Okay, the final item on our agenda this afternoon is display of signs on the public right-of-way and other city property.
Yes, Mayor and Councilmembers, Kathy Wolkot in my office has been working on this item, and she's agreed to come do a short presentation. I don't know how much you want her to go over the information that's in the staff report, but she's going to try and summarize it rather quickly for you so that you get a feel for what this item is and what the proposed minimal amount of changes are.
Good evening. Oh, back in 2004, when our former economic development director was doing his staff report on the private property portion of the sign code, he described sign code review as being sort of akin to undergoing dental work. So I'll try not to drill too hard. To give those of you who weren't here in 2004 a little bit of background, in 2003, the city began the lengthy and detailed process of updating its regulations regulating signs, both on private and public property. The first steps, planning, department solicited information from the community, community input. Residents gave input on the type and the quality of signs they wanted to see in the environment, in the visual environment they wanted to live in. Businesses gave input on their business needs for signage and what their recommendations were for the benefit of the community. And we also consulted with consultants and sign manufacturers to find out about new trends in signage and how to convey information in a more aesthetically pleasing way. After that, was given a citizens committee, studied all the input, and they gave very clear direction to staff. And that clear direction included limiting commercial signs to onsite locations only, prohibiting billboards entirely, and maintaining as uncluttered an environment as possible. Also in 2004, we consulted with a sign law expert, Randall Morrison, who gave, among his other advice, was splitting the sign code between a private property or regulatory portion of the sign code and a proprietary portion of the sign code, which would be the city regulating signs on its own property. So in 2005, the city council adopted the private property portion of the sign code, and what we're bringing forth to you today is our proposal for the public property portion of the sign code. The process of regulating signs is complicated by the fact that signs are speech, as you're aware, and almost all speech has some level or other of First Amendment protection. Speech on public property involves some of the most fundamental rights guaranteed under the Constitution, which is the rights of free speech and the right of assembly, and we are addressing that today. However, the courts have also held that reducing visual clutter and protecting the aesthetics of the community are important government interests, and if we find that those are important to us, then we can pass properly-warded ordinances to create that environment and protect those interests. What staff proposes to do tonight is amend two titles of the municipal code. Title 13, which is regulations on public property, and Title 10, which is our assembly or parade ordinance. We also recommend combining three current council policies, L16, K11, and B14, which regulate or give some display opportunities for certain types of nonprofit speech on city properties. And these changes are being submitted to you for discussion, review, and direction to staff. If you disagree, you can tell us. The current restrictions that we have right now are very short and sweet, and they're in Title 20, they're in Title 20 in 2067, and also in Title 4. And basically, they're content neutral restrictions on speech that prohibit temporary private-party signs on public property, period. These have been enough to protect the city's policy so far. However, it's advisable to expand them, both to show a clearer constitutional basis for our regulations, to give guidelines to our enforcement officers, to give guidelines to the people who would like to display signs and want to know how that's permissible, and also to provide a required alternative means of speech, which currently is not clearly reflected in our ordinance. And that, that alternative means of speech is being provided by the addition to Title 10 for personally-held or attended signs. Without going too deeply into First Amendment law, very brief review, after we've shown a substantial government interest, safety and aesthetics, administrative burden of removing illegally-placed signs, the next thing we do is look at where the speech is taking place and whether it's commercial or non-commercial. Non-commercial speech, obviously, is speech about ideas or opinions, religious speech, opinions about foreign policy, election signs. Commercial speech in a public property setting is going to be speech about goods and services. Some that you might have seen posted illegally were the OC Singles signs on the medians and the parkways last year. Sign twirlers urging you to visit mattress warehouse. Those are all commercial speech, and the policy decision seems to have been made by the community that that's not something they want to permit. We are also, although commercial speech has constitutional protection, particularly in a private setting, it has much less protection in a public property setting. And there is a California Penal Code provision that makes it, declares it a nuisance and allows us to prosecute as a misdemeanor if a commercial sign is left on city property. There's also a third rapidly-evolving category, government speech, and what's significant for us there is that the government is allowed to speak on its own property, and it doesn't even have to be content neutral. So the next step in the analysis, after you've said whether it's commercial or non-commercial, is where is it taking place? The most important in the tradition, in the public property setting is whether or not the speech is in a traditional public forum. Those are the areas that have been traditionally used for speech by the public. Parks, streets, and the sidewalks adjacent to the streets are the classic examples. If the speech is taking place in the traditional public forum, the regulations have to be content neutral. You can do a time, place, and manner restriction, but it has to be content neutral. This means in the traditional public forum, you cannot say you can only have one class of speech. If we tried to say you could have political speech but no religious speech, we'd be in Even the content-neutral restrictions have to leave open ample alternative means of communication, which is why we are adding the personally-attended signs section into Title 10. Outside the traditional public forum areas, if it is property owned by the city, it's a nonforum or a non-public forum. This means that speech is not allowed there unless we designate that it can be, and it doesn't have to be allowed there at all. The city can, if it chooses to, designate areas for speech, and it can limit, in some situations, the speakers and the topics. If there's a designated public forum, this means it's treated more or less like a traditional public forum, but the city has to intentionally open it up. They don't allow, arise by prescription, they don't arise by accident, it's an intentional act on the part of the city. Generally, designated public forums would have an open category of speech, content neutral, but no big restrictions on the topics or the speakers. By contrast, a limited public forum can also be created by the city, and this, in a limited public forum, you can limit the speakers, you can limit the topics. It's a tool that we're using a lot in our proposals for the changes to the council policy. One important thing about a limited public forum, however, is you cannot create it in a traditional public forum area. If you allow just one category of non-commercial speech in the traditional public forum, you have to allow the others. An anomaly is that you can create a limited public forum and only allow commercial speech. And this is the kind of restrictions that we place on our street furniture agreements, or bus shelter agreements. And the reason that you do that, and the reason that cities find this desirable, is because if you allow non-commercial speech, you may be opening it up for more controversial non-commercial speech than cities are comfortable with on their property. A summary of the proposed changes to our municipal code, briefly. Changes to Title 13, we add Chapter 13.25, use of public property signs. First, we make this findings that are necessary to justify the restrictions, traffic safety, aesthetics, protecting city property, and excess burdens of removing the illegally-placed signs. And we add definitions, including a definition of sign that is similar to that in 2067. We prohibit posting of signs on city property, as the current provisions do, but in more detail. Then we give a clear prohibition on commercial sign posting. We also prohibit non-commercial signs. However, because some cases have taken a position that a person with a non-commercial sign has a property right in that sign, we don't just take the sign and throw it away automatically. The ordinance sets forth one option.
Hold on, just, that was one of my questions. Legally, then, we can't just chuck all these signs? I mean, there was this long thing of, we'll get the sign and we'll call them, and then we'll do that, it seemed really, really nonsensical, but there's a legal reason.
There were cases where the city was held to be in violation of a constitutional right or a right of the sign owner because they said that the sign owner had a property interest in the sign. Now, in that case, the sign, the specific one I'm thinking of, the sign was posted on top of a car that was parked on the private, on the public right-of-way. So, it's a little if-er because it's on their property on public property, a little farther removed. But there were a few cases that dealt with a property interest in it. Now, we think that the California Penal Code's treatment of commercial signs gives us the latitude to say, there's no property interest, it's litter, and to just remove it and summarily discard it. But as far as the non-commercial signs, we feel that to be safe, some notice should be given. However, there are some options there. The notice, as we put it right now, is removal. If the sign has been removed, the sign owner can assume that it was posted illegally. And what we've done in the past is keep it for two weeks at the General Services Yard, and Mark Harmon can tell you all about what a joy that is, and what it costs them. The ordinance sets forth provisions, as written right now, it sets forth provisions for retrieving the sign, once. After that, if there are other signs that are posted that are substantially similar, such as, if we've pulled a sign that says yes on measure Z, and then next we see a sign that says, measure Z, vote yes for a change, we're going to assume that's the same sign, same poster, and not give them the benefit of the doubt that it's a brand-new sign and they didn't know. We had a different policy in one of the elections, though, that may have worked better. And because we didn't have anything on the books, we came up with a policy with the city clerk's office and the affected departments, and what we did was have the city clerk publish a regular schedule. First, she notified all the candidates so that they had notice. Then she published a calendar of what our regular dump days would be. And the dump day was every two weeks. So, if your sign got pulled the day before the dump day, you only had a day to go get it back. And one possibility we've been discussing is maybe having a weekly, a regular set, one day a week, the signs get dumped.
Why are we so interested, I mean, in giving everybody their signs back? They are a blight.
I don't disagree.
And, I mean, this idea, what you said before of, okay, you, you say no on Z, you get one sign, that means the next 27 you pick up, you can chuck because they still say no on Z.
Mm-hmm.
That seems to me, if we have to tread a legal path, that seems to be, at least we're treading a little bit more heavily than with this thing of notifying people. I, I mean, I think most of us try to keep our signs off, off public property, but we get, people get very excited, but it's still, the, the harder we can, harsher we can be on that. I, I've listened to Mark talk about how his staff puts their lives in danger trying to remove these things. I know it's costly for the city, we don't make it up in what we charge your filing fee. So, I would encourage us to be as abrupt and harsh as we can.
Rob, do you have any policy thoughts on that?
Councilman Curry.
Yeah, Kathy, I'm not exactly sure I understand what we're doing with all of these changes, so let me ask a couple of examples, and you can help me.
Sure.
What do we currently do now for real estate open house signs, and does this ordinance affect it?
This ordinance does not affect how we treat real estate open house signs. Real estate signs are dealt with in Chapter 2067, and they are left alone.
So someone having an open house over the weekend, they can put their signs out and pick them up as they normally do?
That is how it's written.
And that's not being affected?
Correct.
As relates to campaign signs, which I thought were sort of prohibited in the public right-of-ways anyway, and then we pick them up and let people, you know, put them back out again, apparently, what are we doing that's different than what is the current status of, of things?
It codifies what we're doing, and we're also asking for policy direction on how you'd like it handled. If you want something different, if you'd like to take a little bit of a risk as far as the argument that somebody has some degree of ownership interest in their sign, then we can take that direction and incorporate it.
Can we, for example, differentiate, can we say there will absolutely be no signs placed in any of the city medians or on any utility pools, and take a different tact as it relates to, for example, parkway grass?
Rob?
It, it depends upon, under what type of situation, because if we, if we were to say just parkway grass, it's okay for only political signs, no, we can't do that because we'd have to open it up for all signs. So, and we do.
Can we ban, can we ban all signs for Evermore from, for example, highway, road medians?
We do now. It's already banned.
All right. Can we do it in a way that we really mean it?
Well, we do.
Cost recovery?
We do enforce it, we just have to enforce it equally.
And what about utility pools, the Edison pools, which seem to be among the most onerous of where people put signs because they stay there the longest?
City doesn't own the Edison pools. City pools are.
So those are private property?
Are not speech, and we, we can control those, those are not a traditional, excuse me, a traditional public forum.
Okay.
So we can remove those?
Well, we don't allow them on city pools right now, and we can remove them. And, and I, I think all we're asking for is any kind of a change in policy with what we do with the removal. And I think the question is, right now, our policy and what we're proposing to codify is, is some sort of a, of an advance notice, whether it be a political sign, an election sign, or a for rent sign, to have a, a kind of a fair process where people know in advance, and if they know in advance that they're not allowed to do that, we, I don't, I think that they would, just the pulling of the sign would be enough to be able to toss them because they have advanced notice.
Great. And then one more quick question, as it relates to banners in Newport Center for Taste of Newport and, and the Film Festival and all that stuff?
That's dealt with in the policies.
The banners are in the council policy.
Are we changing anything from our current policy?
No, what we're doing is combining them, combining the three council policies that currently deal with private party.
But they're not substantially changed from our current authorization process?
No.
No, although one thing it does clarify is that we, basically, we're creating a limited public forum. So the one thing it clarifies is that those banners are not going to occur on, say, posted in the grass or in the median, it can't be in the traditional public forum, it can only be on a fixture.
Councilman Head?
Yeah, so basically, you're, you're cleaning up the legal base.
Yeah, so basically, you're cleaning up the legal basis for how we deal with signs. You're, you're cleaning up the structure of the ordinances that we've got. But you're really not substantively changing how we, how we deal with signs.
Not a huge substantive change. We're doing a substantive addition by adding a section in Title X that prove, that allows, with restrictions, people basically to picket, to hold the sign. I think we're making the judgment call that if you care that much about your speech, that you're going to stand there and hold the sign or be within five feet of it, or here, pay someone to hold the sign. I've seen that done.
All right.
Then we're going to allow that. That's your alternative means of communication.
Subject to the restriction on focused picketing.
Subject to the restriction on focused picketing, subject to the time, place, and manner restrictions.
But so now, I guess I'd have a question of staff. What's our impression about where the source of complaints from the public comes on signs in public property? What's, regarding what kinds of signs? Where, what are the most complaints associated with?
On any given day, and mostly on the weekends, are signs that are posted for rental of property or garage sales, that sort of thing, those type of, of kind of commercial sales. Also, we do sometimes have commercial businesses that'll place a sign out on a sidewalk or that sort of thing.
How about during elections?
That's the other source. And I don't, I haven't, the biggest complaint that we have on that is, is dealing with enforcement of our code that doesn't allow for it.
Yeah, I would say the biggest complaint is during election time, and that's just the proliferation. People get tired of seeing it. It depends upon who has the most signs out there and which side it is as to, you know, what the complaint is.
I don't know how many of the council members noticed the quote at the end of the staff report that was taken from a court decision.
But, but I guess my question is, what's your impression? Let's, let's talk about political signs. Is it your impression that the abuse of our regulations for political signs gets more and more worse in each election? Does it seem to be trending in a, in an adverse direction here?
Yeah, I'd like to call up Mark Harmon because his people are the ones who enforce this. But I think it depends upon the election. But there is a lot of money that going, going in the elections, and signage on public property is a key way to get the message out.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll give the quick answer. Yes, Councilmember Hen, it does appear to be getting worse. At the last council meeting, I'm not going to say who, but we, or who is the biggest offender. But we had 160 hours of picking up just about 3,000 signs. And that's a tremendous amount of staff time away from what we normally do to collect illegally posted signs.
Well, and, but more important to me than that is the danger associated with it. You know, I've seen people dashing across high-traffic, high-speed streets to either put signs in the median or take them away is, that's, that's dangerous.
Yeah, and it isn't just, and I'm glad Councilmember made that point. You know, we talked about the danger to staff. We've watched people, because we have staff out street sweeping at about four in the morning, and that's when we'll see people running across a highway, park on the highway in a lane of traffic, but their flashers on, if they have them. And they're, they're putting signs out in the medians on Coast Highway and Jamboree and these other places. So, you know, it's not just a concern for staff. It's a concern for anybody that's placing these signs.
So I guess my view is, I'm not so concerned about what the ordinance or the policy says. I'm concerned with enforcement. And maybe we need to change the policy to make it more penalizing for people to abuse the regulations. And I, I guess I'd probably support that. I support it anyway because my experience was I had so many of my signs stolen in the last election. It doesn't really make a lot of difference. And so I, you know, I, for one, support Councilwoman Gardner's point of view on this, that, you know, we ought to strengthen this. We ought to make it painful for people to routinely abuse these ordinances.
And I'd certainly agree with that. And there's one other point to all of this, and that's the damage to the medians that, that we're experiencing. These medians are not designed to have people running along them at, you know, two in the morning to post signs. The, we're finding time and again, the wooden stake that the signs are attached to is being driven right through irrigation lines, especially drip irrigation. They're stepping on sprinkler heads. They're, you know, they're destroying some of the vegetation there. So, you know, it's not just the danger to the person. These, these medians are taking a beating as well. So we, we certainly support some kind of a, some kind of an action to curtail that a little bit.
I, I wouldn't mind seeing it changed. We ought to turn this over. I mean, I'd appreciate staff's view of it. I wouldn't mind seeing it changed, after the first sweep, additional signs of a similar nature there picked up, just get pitched.
Yeah, and I, and one correction to, to Kathy's comments. We're only holding, currently only holding the signs a week. But it doesn't matter. We come in with a truck full of signs and, and honestly, we'll have two or three station wagons or other pickups there waiting to load them up. And as fast as we're pulling these, we even had one case where we were pulling them off one median at 3:00 in the morning, and right behind us, people were putting them up. No, that's, that's a true story. So, you know, we just, there's no way to stay ahead of it. You know, they know that there's no financial risk. The big problem, I'm glad we brought up utility poles, they're getting a little more aggressive. I don't know if you noticed this time, but now they know we pull them off medians. So they're putting them about 20 feet up on utility poles. They're taking about half a roll of duct tape, and they're sort of wrapping the sign on the utility pole. We've got to put a truck in traffic, put an extension ladder, cut these off the pole. They're taking paint with them when we remove the tape. And it's just getting to be, it's getting to be a dogfight. And when you think of 3,000 signs, it's a, it's quite the dogfight.
Councilman Webb?
See, I was, my question really was not political signs so much as it was the, the, and you partially answered the question related to the garage sales and lost kitty signs and install your Christmas lights. So that seems to be something that has been very prevalent recently. We can just.
The singles.com is the one that is the most amazing in the center median. That, that happens quite a bit. That's happened a lot overnight.
Is our staff instructed to remove all of those?
Yes. They've been removing them.
Now, what happens if, if you get somebody just walking down the street and sees these tied up to streetlight poles? Can they remove them, or are they related to a lost kitty, that's for, for example, or Christmas light installation?
You mean, can just a citizen remove it?
Yeah.
I don't see any reason why not. That's not our action.
But is there, I mean, is, is there a penalty because it's a constitutional freedom to post stuff anywhere you want?
No, you don't have a freedom to post it on the public property.
Got a right to throw it away, too. Councilman Curry?
Well, I would, in terms of direction, what I would like to see is a way that we can make our utility poles and persuade our friends at the Edison Company to make their utility poles and make, and make our streetlights and our road medians sign-free zones, for whatever sign, for whatever purpose, other than the banners in Fashion Island on the banner poles like we've talked about before. I don't think there's any reason in any election why those areas ought to be used by political or other signs or of any type whatsoever. You know, beyond that, you know, I think these are reasonable kinds of, of regulations. You know, I'm less concerned about, you know, homeowner association properties or, or that kind of thing. But, but, but the medians and the light poles really lead to blight. They, they're very unsafe, and they stay up, you know, long after the events of the election. So I'd like to see us be as tough as possible in coming down on ways, either through fines or prohibitions or other techniques, to see if we can eliminate that from the community.
There is language about cost recovery written into the ordinance. We can strengthen it or deal with it in the administrative code update for cost recovery issues.
There was, there's one other question that we do provide right now, and this is kind of, I guess, the best, maybe the most well-known example, is on that medium in Marguerite and Coronel del Mar. We have the banners for the public events and the city events and the community events. And one of the things we wanted to get some direction on is it would be better, since we normally don't allow any type of speech in that location, to establish some sort of a, of a vehicle for posting signs.
We have been talking about this at the bid.
Yes, and so the question would be, does the council want us to look at coming up with a policy for something like that? Might be a community message board? Or to just put some sort of an ability to have a replacement sign or banner already set up in there without having some sort of an electronic reader board?
We had talked about a board at the bid meeting, and I know the bid in particular is not liking the banners because they look pretty droopy. And so if we could have something, some suggestions along the line of something more permanent, that could be a community message board would be great. I just have one thing. If this is going to be an ordinance, you do have a grammatical error where your subject and predicate don't match, and I'll email it to you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Deagle?
Just kind of an impartial view of trying to figure out, okay, well, where is this going to go? If you do have a regulation that you dispose of them faster immediately, then you have to look ahead at, okay, well, who does this benefit? It benefits the campaign that's more funded, you know? And then you get into criticisms of big money. So you look at who it benefits. Is the campaign that can afford just an onslaught of signs and a, just a substantial inventory? If you operate off the premise that people want to put their signs out, they want to get their name out there, then you sort of have to look at, well, who's, which campaign is going to be more equipped to continue to place the signs out? Just a thought.
I'm not sure quite I understood that. But you, you mentioned cost recovery. Are we considering, I don't know, $5 a sign for removal? Or, or is that the type of penalty that we can have?
I think it has to be rationally related to the actual cost of removing the sign. So the recommendation from that will come from General Services or code enforcement.
But is that something that we're actually going to consider as a part of this ordinance, as adopting some sort of fine?
We won't, we probably, we will look into that and, and provide that type of an option or the various options on enforcement and the way to recover for signs in, with this direction. So when we bring it back, we'll have that information for you.
And that would apply also to the lost kitties? I'm serious.
Well, it will apply, it will apply equally to all signs with some sort of an advance notice. So we, we will try and make sure that there's a way of making it apply equally because the lost kitties might be the only, one and only time that, that family happens to put that, that sign up. And so we'll have to work and make sure it applies equally to anybody that puts up signs either on a regular basis, on an occasional basis, or, you know, only once in their lifetime.
Councilman Hen?
One, one more thought. I, this isn't necessarily for the ordinance, but I think we need to figure out how to guard against informal understandings about when signs will be collected during campaigns and when they won't be. We got to get away from that, too. So I don't know if that's an ordinance issue, but I'm just encouraging us to come back with a menu of alternatives here to tamp this problem down.
Well, I think with the, the kind of the assessment that I'm hearing is that enforcement is the appropriate way. And so what we can do is come back with that direction and come up with a fair process for enforcement. And then there won't be an understanding because then we'll have a clearly adopted regulation for everybody to follow on enforcement.
Well, one thing I'd say is, you know, when it comes to financial sanctions, I think it's an area we need to be careful of because I know that in my own campaign, I tried to keep my signs out of the public right of way, but after so many people get their hands on them, you lose control of it. It was easy to control them the first week or so as they got out there and got redistributed. You don't have, you don't have control of what's going on. You also, you also don't have control of what someone else might do to take one candidate's sign off of public property and punitively put it on public property. So there's some things to think about there.
No, I know that. And so for that reason, I'm a little leery of actually imposing monetary fines. But the idea of pitching the ones that were in the wrong place and not providing, making it easy for people to abuse and then re-abuse the ordinance, that's the area that I.
And that's a good consideration. We'll take that into consideration on figuring out how to handle that.
That is one of the things we took in consideration when we were working on the notice provisions because we were considering that it was possible that volunteers of a campaign, not the sign owner, were improperly posting them, and the sign owner didn't know.
And I make my comments secure in the knowledge that none of the people up here, when they had their campaigns, ever violated the rules.
Absolutely. You know, one, one other, one other admonition. One, one other admonition that I would make is that if we are going to do this, then your guys need to understand where a public right of way ends and where private property begins because there were instances where property, signs were taken off of private property that appeared to be public property because they didn't know where the right of way line was.
Yeah, and I'll agree with that. Our guys obviously don't go out there and with, and measure. You know, we do the best we can. And there were, I think, two cases where we did pull them off of private property. I will say, though, we get a lot of phone calls where, you guys picked up my signs, I saw you guys out there when it wasn't at all General Services. So I know there's a lot of, you know, maybe, maybe one campaign against another. We got that a lot with Measure B. We were accused of picking one side, not the other. So those things happen, but we'll do our best to make sure we don't.
Mark, do you ever get complaints from private property owners to, or do you ever, ever get any information about private property owners removing signs on their property?
We've had calls from private property owners asking us to remove signs that were placed on their property. And we tell them, no, we'll tell them to go ahead and remove. You know, they will go ahead and remove them. We won't do that. Because once they see us going down side yards to pick up signs, we can, things can get ugly pretty quick. I will say this, last time with Measure B, a lot of people used our graffiti hotline, and that was a first. They're calling the graffiti hotline to report signs. So, you know, we are being alerted to the problem.
Councilman Webb?
I sure am glad that I don't have to run for election again. I'm only concerned about the lost kitties, and I don't have a kitty, so maybe I can solve that problem, too.
Do we have direction on what you would like us to come back to you with on the sign in the medians for the types of displays that has communicative activity we've been supporting at, let's see, Grant Howell Park and Marguerite and PCH?
I think we can come back with something. I think I have direction, Kathy.
Those signs also appear at Superior and Coast Highway.
Superior and Coast Highway?
Mariners and, I mean, at Dover and Irvine and the fire station wall, also Mariner's School.
Right. They're okay on the fire station wall because that's a fixture, not displayed right in the median. Thank you.
That's probably another discussion.
They do need the permission. They do need the permission, and it's best if we have a written policy and there's procedures you need to go through to make it a defensible, limited public forum, but I won't bore you with that. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any public comments on the sign code?
I would just make one comment, Mayor. It strikes me, and I didn't see it in the staff report, but I think going now, you're allowed to put those signs out 90 days in advance. Do you want to consider shorting that, or are you not taking that?
That's not allowed in our code.
Yeah?
No, there is no time limit that allows any type of sign to go on public property during any period of time.
But I thought letting those signs.
No, they're not, no signs, any type of sign on public property is not permitted anywhere on city property.
Isn't he referring to planting it in your front yard? Like, is that, is there a limitation on when you can start?
Oh, that's in the private sign code, and I don't believe there is a time limit on your own public, your own private property.
Political elections, we were advised by Levon that we couldn't post them more than 90 days in advance, I believe.
Yeah, I've heard that, too, somewhere.
Non-commercial?
No, that's not the case. What we allow is there's a certain size and number of signs that you're allowed. They're called, basically, non-commercial opinion signs, and anybody can put any number within a certain size range on their own private property.
All year round.
You can keep it there all year round?
Yep.
Right, and start running for reelection right now?
The sign in your front yard.
Okay, any other comments on the sign code? Public comments on anything not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're adjourned to closed session.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask the council's indulgence to see if I can get a vote to add an item to the closed session agenda? It would be a matter that came up after the posting of the agenda that, in our determination, would be helpful to get some direction from the council on for, before the next meeting. So I'd like to ask for a vote. I need to get at least six votes to be able to approve this. The agenda item would be adding the Newport Beach Brewery Company versus the City of Newport Beach and its case number 07CC, 01408.
Move it be added to the agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Public comment?
There is an agenda item on this assessment District 99, and I didn't know if you had any questions. I'm the guy that initially spearheaded that, and it, it went down for defeat when we, when it went out, I think in, was it March or September? I can't remember now. But in any case, they have revised the boundaries, and we'd like to have a rebid. It's partially rebid already, and there's a portion of it coming, I think, to ask you to fund some of the rebidding.
Which, which one is that?
13.
Dr. Anderson, that's on the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Right.
Beginning at seven, so you'll have an opportunity to.
He would need to pull it off the agenda if he wants to.
It's not the consent calendar?
It's on the consent calendar, so absent any public discussion, it'll just get approved.
Okay. Well, is this something I should show up for tonight, or?
You may wish to do that, depending on whether or not somebody asks to pull it out of the consent calendar, it might be a good idea for you.
If you have an interest in it, you probably ought to show up.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's one of the first items.
Okay, back to original thing. Please vote.
Motion carries.